If everyone would stand, we will call this city council meeting to order. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll ask Councilman Michael Crisp if he will lead us in the pledge. Thank you, and good evening to all of you, and welcome to a nice, cool night here in Georgetown. It's definitely been close to winter and the best time of the year. So, we're here to conduct business for the city of Georgetown. We're going to do that. We will ask council, please remember that turn on your mics when you're speaking, and when you're not speaking, please turn off your mics so that we don't have no background noises. Also, reminder that those when it comes to the podium, please state your name so for the record as we conduct business. At this time, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mrs. Wilkins Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Crisp.
Here.
Mrs. Hambrick.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. Menke.
Present.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell.
Here.
Mrs. Single Sains.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next on the agenda, item number three, the approval of minutes from November 24th, 2025, regular meeting. At this time, council, I will entertain a motion. Motion made by Mr. Hampton. There's a second. Second made by, over there, by Mr. Crisp. Thank you. All right, are there further questions and or comments? Although in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Item number three is we, the check registry. Also, you should be a little bit linked this time because we did not have it for the last meeting. So, council, if you have received that, please raise your hand. That the record reflect that all have received it. At this time, item number five, public comments. Wants to remind you that public comments, you have four minutes to state your, what you want to say to council. Madam Clerk will time you at three minutes. She will let you know that you have one minute left. And at that time, if you will be very respectful and finish up and take your seat, we will be continuing with business. First, I got, let's see, Chief Seth Johnson. Smoke detector giveaway.
Yes, hello. Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you. I won't take four minutes, I promise. Wanted to make a quick announcement that Assistant Chief Ann Willett, Assistant Chief of Prevention, and her team are going to be conducting a smoke detector giveaway for the community. The first one's going to be this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. at the Pavilion. It's 9:00 to 12:00. And then the second one's going to be the following Wednesday, December the 17th. We'll make an announcement on our Facebook page and get it out to the paper and try to get it out to the public as much as we can. But if you have some constituents that might need some smoke detectors or just have some questions, send them here. Feel free. We'll also take a list at that time. If somebody needs help installing those detectors or just have us come out and check them, we'll make a list and get out to them. So, I just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you.
What time on Wednesday?
It's both times, or 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., December the 11th and December the 17th at the Pavilion.
Okay. Chief, while we got you up here, could you talk a little bit about Toys for Tots and give us an update on that?
Yes, they've been doing fabulous, fabulous. I think the next event is December the 20th. And firefighter Calvert, who's in charge of Toys for Tots, is going to be making an announcement soon to the public about that as well.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Steve Glass, and we're going to talk about tax cuts.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Russ Lippman always said, when he was on the radio, he said, if somebody tells you it's not about the money, you sure it's about the money. So, I won't lie to you. It's about the money I'm going to talk about tonight. The people of Georgetown, the taxpayers, deserve a dividend, otherwise known as a tax debt. With a $6 million profit last year and a $30 million reserve, you've got 30 million in over-collected tax. And that's even twice what you talked about that you'd like to have as a reserve, although I think 15 million's too much. Specifically, what you all need to think about is repealing the 911 fee. That's a totally unjust tax for the people of Georgetown because the people outside Georgetown that live in Scott County don't pay that. In other words, people of Georgetown have to pay to call 911. I mean, how does that work? I mean, we all need to pay it or none of us need to pay it. So, I would strongly encourage you to repeal that. Also, the other tax that's unfair and goes counter to what you all want to do as far as affordable housing is the tax on insurance premiums. You know, property taxes, there's a state statute that that can only rise by a figure of like 4%. That's what they call the compensating rate. But you all are now collecting more from insurance premium tax than you are property tax. And the reason is that there's no limit. In other words, a lot of insurance premiums have doubled in the last three or four years. So, it means that you are collecting twice the tax. So, I would think that you could at least lower that tax enough to where it would be the same as you would be collecting if there wasn't the inflation. Does that sound fair? I mean, it does to me. It only takes two of you. One to make the, to make the motion, and another one to second it. Or at least put it on new business. You know, we built the, or we renovated the city hall 10 million bucks. That would have built 50 $200,000 houses and would have satisfably helped the homeless problem. Or affordable housing, I don't know if it would have helped homeless that much, but would have relieved some of the affordable housing. You all could have rented those houses out. And a good manager, you would have made more than you can make in the bank on those. So, I mean, look at all the new buildings right here. We've got the Pavilion, which is
That's three minutes.
Only used about, what, less than 25% of the year. Got the Justice Building. And the reason we need the Justice Building because all the judges want their own courtroom. Whoever heard the light? Got the new sheriff's office out there. That's a palace. So, I mean, we got a council lounge and a third-floor office for the mayor. Mayor needs to be on the first floor. He needs to see the people that come in. He needs to be there to help the people. The third floor is totally inappropriate. I'd like to know what it cost. I'd like to know what it cost to make use of that third floor. It would be several houses, I'd say. Anyway, thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glass. All right.
I'm sorry. I don't think I got my name officially.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Dan Holman, here in Georgetown. And I pass out these little things to just kind of make clear, just specific things to think about. So, I'll go do this. So, tonight on the agenda is more board appointments. And specifically, so two of these agenda items are about GMWSS, which a lot of people have been, you know, talking about, and we all need to talk about it. It's an important part of the town. So, yeah, lots of, so several people have applied to the Board of Commissioners. So, Jeff Clarky is, he's a nice guy and he's qualified, but I thank you all. I'm just encouraging you all to say no to this one and allow someone else to get on there. He's been on the council before, so he's had, he's had a total of eight years in the past 22 years. And the last four meetings, by the way, that I've been going to their meetings, the last four, he's just been attending online. He hasn't been going there in person. And it appears that he's in his office at Toyota, but he's a busy guy. So, he's, he's too busy to get over there to the meetings in person. So, I frankly think he wouldn't be offended if you all said no to him. He'd probably be a little bit relieved that he doesn't have to go to the meetings anymore and keep up with that because he's, he's busy. I think he'd totally understand. I honestly mean that. Then, okay, then, so also, so say no to that. It would be a great thing to do. And then, we need just some more regular people on there who are focused on citizen concerns of water quality and costs specifically. Then, related to GMSS Board, this, there's this KRS 96, Chapter 96 sets up a lot of things about municipal utilities. And this is just something that someone might, I'm encouraging you to request this to be looked at. The GMSS Board can apparently be set up in three different ways. It can be a department of the city, which is the cleanest, simplest thing, and that would make sense. To me, as a citizen, that would just make sense. But the way it is now is a little bit antiquated. It has its commissioner structure. And so, that's worth looking at. Should we, should we restructure that? The 21st century is here. This was appropriate like 80 years ago, but is this still the right way? And could KRS 96 dot 320 be looked at for possibilities, how to possibly restructure the board? And maybe the staff could just generate a report, a memo explaining that for you all to consider. So, maybe if someone could ask the staff to generate a memo, just explaining that, that would be great. And then, then Lanes Run Phase 3 is on the agenda for the construction contract. So, just something to consider. It would be hard, something to consider. So, Lane, so that is BP 1 zoning. And just for the future, is BP 1 zoning the way that we want to build, you know, any future business parks in Georgetown? It appears, it appears, just by looking at it, is awfully spread out, and it appears to be space wasting, frankly. People drive by Lanes Run Phase 1 and 2, and they wouldn't believe it's full, but it's apparently full. So, Holden Fleming, even at the last inter-local meeting, he kind of hinted at this. He said, maybe we do need to consider a BP 2 zoning for future projects. So, yeah, this Phase 3 is kind of down in the ravine. Nobody's going to really physically see most of it. So, I think you all should just make that as dense as possible. Stick as many businesses in there as possible. And that's at least a question for the PMZ Advisory Committee to consider, like review BP 1, and is that what we want to use going forward? Or should more density where you don't run out of space be considered? So, those are just three, three food for thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else that fell to write in or sign in and wanted to speak for council? All right. If there was no other, item number six is mayor comments. And before I go into that, we had a discussion about the city hall. And what they're going to do is we asked, asked them to get a memo to share with us by the end of the week so we'll know exactly what is their timeline, what have they got done thus far, what have they got left to do? And so, we can kind of get updated on that. So, once that's given to us, I will share with council through email. All right? Next, 6A, the 250th anniversary of Georgetown founding, events update. And this was an oversight on my part. You know, we did a proclamation last week, but you know what? You probably need to tell people what that proclamation is and what it stands for. So, so that's on me. So, I did ask Glenn, I said, Glenn, that's on me. So, I asked Glenn to come back. He gave you some, some handouts here and talks a little bit about the 250 celebrate Georgetown. And I'm going to give him some time to actually come up and talk a little bit. And if the council have a couple of questions they may want to ask, they may do so. Mr. Tall, thank you for coming this evening and time again. And once again, I apologize for bringing you back out again
That's fine.
In this snowy, cold night, but hope you forgive me on that.
I am Glenn Tall. Some of you know me. Last year, we, Gus Barnum and I went to the mayor to talk about trying to get the property of KU because he wanted to reconstruct the McClellan's Fort that used to be on the site where the old KU office was. Well, then I realized that it's this year will mark the 250th anniversary in which Georgetown, the first settlement of Georgetown began. And I said, well, no one has really talked about celebrating that. And I had heard about Lexington, our neighbor, going in big for a big celebration the whole year. And they're about ready to finish that year up this month. And Lexington and Georgetown and one other city in Kentucky is celebrating 250 years. The other one is Stanford, Kentucky. It was once known as St. Asaph, and then it was later known as Logan's Ford. And now, today's known as Stanford. So, I wanted to follow the model of Lexington. So, I was, we formed a committee that the mayor had invited to sit on, and we've been meeting since early last year to, to plan activities. And now, we have come to the point where we are celebrating that. What I've given you in the packet is the logo that we've adopted for, we're going to celebrate a year. So, we're two months into the celebration. And I've given you copies of the calendar of events for November and December. Now, this is going to be sort of a rolling calendar. And some of the activities that we're going to do will need some kind of financial help. And that's why I asked the mayor for, Lexington had, the mayor over there had budgeted $300,000 for their celebration. And so, I was asking at least for some financial help to help with some of the activities with our celebration. And we, we appreciate, I understand you all have contributed $10,000 and appreciate it. We've asked the kind graces of Ward Hall to be our fiscal agent. And they are doing, we're working well with them. And one of the ways that we're going to, so some events are going to be planned by our committee. And then, we're going to partner with other organizations within the community. We've already done it, as you will see on the calendar of events. This month, we're sort of following a theme months throughout the year. This month is Bourbon Month. Last, last month was History Month. And we had a very active month. And next month is Citizenship Month. Now, Lexington didn't have this category in their planning. And we've already had one event involved in that. And we've already had one event involved in that. We had a program on gerrymandering at Georgetown College. And Secretary Adams, State Secretary Adams participated in that along with two other Georgetown professors. And it was a well-attended, packed meeting. And the meeting was, the discussion was civil. It was, it was very informative. A lot of ideas were exchanged. And we're hoping to have another similar meeting on voting next year. And I'm working with a young man, Mayor Knows, Justin Black, to come up next month. We're thinking about showing this, the movies, Mr. Smith Goes to Washington. And then have a community discussion about, well, what does citizenship mean in context of what Mr. Smith was understanding back in Kansas in the 1930s? And then we were, we're hoping to have a second event to talk about lobbying. How do citizens lobby for issues they're interested in? Either at the local level or at the state level. One of the things that I've noticed here in our recent times is I think our local governments are doing a better job of getting the job done than the national government. And I just want to emphasize, and a lot of people are ignorant about local government. And I want to get them informed and encourage them to get engaged in a responsible, you know, beneficial way for the whole community. So that's, that's another. And we've got some other activities we're thinking, like Pioneer Days. We want to get some reenactors in here. It'll happen around Derby Weekend. Talking about all the different kind of skills that pioneers needed and they're demonstrating. It could be shooting a rifle, a black rifle, a black powder rifle. Or it could be sewing. It could be soap making. It could be anything of those activities that pioneers needed to, to survive. So that's sort of the outline about what, way we are doing it. And we're thinking about having a outdoor movie night to see Seabiscuit at Old Friends. And that would be about horses. Because horses are such a part, vital part of Georgetown and Scott County's history. We're all, just to bring the county in a little bit, because it's not the county's time to celebrate yet. Theirs is in, they were formed in 1792. We had ours in 1775. So we're, we're thinking about an old idea that happened during Kentucky's bicentennial, where heritage farms were recognized, where farms had been in families for generations and are still operating in the same family. So that's basically what we're doing. And I'm open to any questions if you all have any.
Questions? Yes, sir. Go ahead. Mr. Minkie, go ahead.
Thank, thank you for coming in and providing some additional information. That's, that's great. The, what's the mechanism or the process you're going to use to be able to communicate these future programs? Because this is the first time we've seen this. And, and it's much appreciated, but we're already midway into December. So going forward, what's the process in publicizing and identifying the programs, you know, many that you've, you've outlined today?
Of course, our advertising budget's limited, but we do, I mean, the newspaper is helping us a lot. You have seen in the last issue of the paper where the activities have been listed for the November month, for this month anyway. And it was published for November last month. We do have a Facebook page. It's Georgetown 250. We, tourism is helping us. They're putting all of our activities on the tourism website. If you've noticed down, up and down Main Street, we've got the flags with the logo on it that are flying up and down. So that's just sort of making students wear. And then because we're working with a library, they've got it on, they put events on their calendar when it's connected with 250. I just wish Georgetown had a radio station where we could do that kind of thing. That's one of the one drawbacks that we, we have as far as communications with getting things out. And I'm learning about different kinds of things. We had an event last week. It was a bourbon tasting event at Galvance. And I learned about some from the participants there that they've got their own kinds of Facebook pages that they can advertise on. So if I can learn how, I'm not a Facebook subscriber. I'm not even a social media subscriber of any kind. But if I could, I, I just need to learn about the different avenues of communication as we go along. Lexington's got a big, huge communication system over there that they can, they can advertise everything. So, and, and we are putting stuff on our Facebook. We don't have a website, but, but that's, if you've got suggestions, I'm open to them.
Well, certain, certainly the, I had gotten several calls from constituents that were asking about it because they didn't know either what, what was going on, what was planned, what would the city was sponsoring or supporting and those kinds of things. So I think at, at, at a minimum, if we can get that information ahead of time in a calendar, kind of planning out the rest of the year of celebrations, even if they're tentative at this point and update them going forward. But at least then we would be able to have that information to help, help you promote that activity. Because I think it's great. There's a lot of rich history here that we need to, need to capitalize on.
One of the things I'm trying to do, of course, I'm the program chair for the Scott County Historical Society. I have worked with the newspaper. We are trying to do monthly columns on different aspects of Georgetown history. I don't know if you saw last week's paper on McClellan Station. The next one is, I won't be writing it, but I've got a student. He's a freshman at Bellarmine. He's going to write on the attack, the Indian attack on McClellan Station and why that. So I have just, we've all, and I've, I'm lining up other authors. I'm hoping Judge Lustby is going to talk, write about the Georgetown Athletics next year. And I think Tammy says that he's, he's all for it. So there's a, there's another program we're going to do through the Historical Society is that I'm going to do an oral history project of, since Garth is celebrating 100 years this year, that we're going to have a panel of five people, five generations. And we're going to ask, we're going to have just a oral, sort of an oral history interview with five people about Garth School.
Oh, wow.
So, and I'm hoping the public will come about that, with that out. So we've got, we've got a lot of, but you, you've got to, I'll try to do that more diligently and do that.
All right. Yes, Ms. Hamrick.
Can anybody use the logo?
I would prefer it be cleared through the committee. Yes, we can, we can give them the logo to use if they're, yes, yes, they can.
Okay. So there's no restriction on that. And the funds that we gave from the city, and by the way, I think this is fantastic emphasis. I'm, I'm learning a lot. I didn't grow up here. I think it's a wonderful event, so none of these questions.
And one thing about the students of Great Crossings designed that logo.
Oh, wow. Oh, that's fantastic. Yeah, it's really good. So is there, the, the funds that the city gave, are, are they undesignated? And given to Ward Hall as the fiscal agent? And then the committee gets to decide how to disperse the funds?
Well, I think we have to go through the city to get permission how to spend the money. It's my understanding.
I can speak to that. So Ward Hall signed an agency appropriation agreement, just like every agency that received funds. So the, the way that those dollars for the, the 250th celebration would be spent are designated in that agreement. I think obviously the Bourbon themed month probably raised some questions. City dollars are not being spent on alcohol. But the purpose for those funds is defined in that agreement. And all the reporting requirements would apply, just like every other agency.
Okay. And so it doesn't always have to come back to us, is my point.
No, no. The money's designated as long as it's spent per the agreement. And reported on properly, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
All right.
And, and I would just say thank you for bringing this together tonight. And for the work that you all have done. And if you could, just like Council member Kim Minkie said, if you, if you could come maybe once a month and say, oh, here, yeah. And say, here's what's coming up for February and March. Tell us in January. Because we do get calls and, and you know, whether we know what we're talking about or not, you know, it, it helps. If you come, give us two months out, what's going to happen, we'll help you.
Well, I wasn't necessarily, I didn't exactly know how the procedure works, so.
You know what? It's, you're a historian, and so you're learning. But we appreciate it.
There is one project I'm excited about. I have gotten the agreement that we're going to have a play written about the history of Georgetown. And it's going to be kind of unique because Betsy Smith in neighboring Centiana, her husband teaches at Georgetown College, Ed Smith. And it's going to be sort of on the format of Saturday Night Live. So it should be very entertaining. I'm looking forward to it. It will be done in late fall next year. Because we, and I'm hoping that we can use some of the city money to put on that production and maybe pay for her time. She's, it's not, she's not charging all that month, but much, but $2,000 to write the play. But, and I'm pretty sure her husband's going to help her. But, but that's, that's one of the things that we're hoping to get done within the year.
Well, once, once again, Mr. Tall, thank you again for coming. I said, we look forward to you coming and giving us a kind of update. Like I said, when he came to, had asked about this project, I was intrigued. And I said, you go with it. And you know, I happened to sit in on a couple of those meetings just to kind of understand what they were doing. So it's, I think it's worthwhile. I'm glad that you let the council know going forward what we are trying to do. And I think one thing I love that you're doing is giving a civic lesson to people to understand just how government really works.
Yes.
Especially at the local level. Because there is a lot of misconception that people have about government that, you know, that they really need to learn that, hey, this is how it works.
And some of you all may be involved in some of those activities.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm hoping you will be open to participating. One of the things that we're hoping to set up is like, is, you might look it up online. It's called the Fred Friendly Seminars. Fred Friendly used to be associated with CBS. And he had these participants who had different roles in a particular scenario. A government issue or a political issue. And then you had a very skilled moderator or facilitator would bring out the questions in, in each of that. And so this is what Justin Black and I are working on and to do that.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you again. All right. Items B and C, these are the executive orders. There were two that I needed to make sure to, last meeting we had was not able to bring to the council for appointment was because, again, one, I could not, didn't have a chance to get in touch with him and him to come back with me on that. And the other, of course, the council wanted some background information, more background information. And just let council know going forward for the next, for the next appointments, which will have, you should have in your coming, hopefully by the 19th, you should have the information, not only that, but also their background and a resume, updated resume for each of those appointments that you're going to have going forward. So, and we'll be able to run on those appointments on the 22nd meeting of December. Item B is the executive order for the Board of Ethics for Mr. John Sosby. This is a reapportment for Mr. Sosby. And this will be his second term. At this time, I will entertain a motion of that. Motion made by Ms. Seames. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Mitchell. Are there further questions and or comments? All those for the executive order for the Board of Ethics for John Sosby reapportment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Let the record reflect that it passed. Item C, the executive order for GMWSS Board of Commissions, Jeff Clark, Clarky. This is a reapportment. I sent you his background and information. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Hamrick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Minkie. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion to the executive order, GMWSS Board of Commissioners, Jeff Clarky for reapportment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
We have one nay. All right. Thank you. I'm going to switch the order of the agenda. I'm going to bring up item 12, which is the City Engineer for Municipal Order for Street Dedication for, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me go back this way. Let's go to 10. Municipal Order for Lane Runs Business Park Phase Three Expansion Project Construction.
Good evening. As you recall, we received a couple of different rounds of KPDI funding for this project. The first round was 1.5 million of KPDI funding with 500,000 each from Scott County, the City of Georgetown, and Scott County United. And then we received a second round of funding. I don't have those exact numbers, but it was around 900,000 with about 240,000. It was 100,000 each from the city and county and about 40,000 from Scott United for the second round of funding. So this construction project is covered by those local match and the KPDI funding. And we put this out to bid. And Rain Contracting was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So you have a municipal order for your approval. If you have any questions regarding the project itself, I will defer to Mr. Connor and Jordan.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Hampton. Do you have a second? Second made by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and or comments or discussion?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I know, Jack Connor, Representative Chambers, Scott County United, the Business Park Authority.
On your Phase Three, have you already started getting interest in that?
Yes, sir.
That section?
Absolutely. They've had a number, number, wow. A number of inquiries, both in the Economic Development Cabinet, as well as I had a client in town three weeks ago today looking at Phase Three. And it fit the timeline. So yes, sir, already. We prepared maps and all that kind of stuff to be able to show. I have them if you would like to look at them. If you don't, I'm going to get those on the website. But yes, sir, we already have interest.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Mayor, could I make a comment?
Yes.
Jack, congratulations on your 30 years and your, was it Citizen of the Year as well?
No, it's just Jack. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hamrick. Thank you.
The city is in your debt for many, many good things. So thank you.
The beauty of it is I'm, I'm leaving the chamber. And I'm going to now go back to Scott County United. So I'll have a new office for at least a couple of years till, till Social Security goes.
So on words, he's not going away. Okay? So there you go. All right. If any others discussion and or comments? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that this motion passed. Thank you. Now, we're going to start back with the agenda. Council Committee reports. I have several. Okay. I think, Mr. Stone, you have a committee report for Public Works, correct?
I do, sir.
Thank you.
And I found it this time.
That's amazing, isn't it?
Isn't it, though? Okay. November 19th, we met at 4:30 PM at the Georgetown Police Department Community Room. Present was myself, Ms. Wilkins Brent, Mayor Jenkins. All others were present as well, including Council Member Kim Minkie, Robert Bruin, Devon Golden, Eddie Hightower, Karen Leverens, Stacy Clark, and Shay Fields. The minutes were approved. Robert Bruin gave an update that reported that weekly leaf pickup would continue through the end of the year. And the trucks, and trucks were ready for the upcoming the end of the year, and the trucks, and trucks were ready for the upcoming winter season, and that code enforcement abatements usually occur at the end of the month, and then code enforcement submits requests. Then Eddie was brought, Eddie Hightower brought up the grant for Clubhouse Drive out in Cherry Blossom Estates that they were working on, the engineering firm to get the plans. Main Street Rehab Project was out to bid in mid-December with a construction hopefully in mid-January. Traffic calming issues in Indian Hills, or I'm sorry, traffic calming issues in near future. Indian Hills Storm Waters approximately 90%. Plans are complete, as well as construction on the Marshall Park Project Restrooms. They've begun and going well. Let's see, the sidewalk project from Royal Springs out to Elizabeth Street, it's in the design phase and easement acquisition phase. So they're hoping sometime next year that we'll get going on that. General discussion, parking issues in the Peninsula neighborhood, not only a topic in Public Works, but in the Traffic Committee as well. There may, we may be moving to bring something before council for discussion in, in new business. Also, if you haven't had a chance, need to go by Boston Community Park. The new playground equipment is up, and it looks wonderful. And at 4:54 PM, we adjourned the meeting.
Thank you, Councilman Stone. Next, we have the Police Committee. Mr. Minkie.
Thank you, Mayor. The Police Committee met on December 1st. All of our committee members were present, including several of the executive staff from the Police Department. And also, the dispatch coordinator, Jennifer Jones, was in attendance for the meeting, which I thought was very good. Our typical topics, talking about staffing, hiring, and recruiting. Assistant Chief Nash reported that we have 66 total officers, three, we have three officers that are awaiting results from their physicals and drug screens before we can make that hire or that offer. We have three in background check, and we have one officer that will be leaving to go to another city. So we're still actively trying to get full staffing there. From a recruiting perspective for the Police Department, we do have a Georgetown College intern. That intern will be with the Police Department for three months. That intern does get credit for their, their schooling, which is part of the way that we're trying to entice some folks to take a look at Georgetown College. That internship, they'll get exposure to all the different areas within the Police Department, all the different departments, as well as dispatch, so that they have a full understanding and can build that relationship with the Police Department. The dispatch coordinator, Jennifer Jones, she provided an update on her staffing as well. Currently, their head count is at 17. That's including two of the recent hires that brought them back up to 17. They did have one dispatcher, longtime dispatcher that was retiring that week as well. And they have four potential dispatchers that are waiting testing. The two recent hires are in waiting to get into their academy, which is a four-week program. So they'll be doing that as soon as they can get into that. The, one of the items that you have on your, your agenda tonight is the Police and Dispatch Facility Needs Assessment. For the last two months, the committee has been discussing that, and we provided some updates back to Branstad or Carroll through the departments and through the mayor's office. And those have been updated, and that's what you have in your packet today. And hopefully, we'll be able to take some action on that activity, which is a budgeted activity. The next item that we discussed, we, we had further discussion around the Power DMS Early Warning Indicator System. It's a software that helps with management. And, you know, again, it's a, it's a good safety measure that helps bring information together so that they have a better picture of what's going on with officers and the cases they've been on or the calls they've been on, and how that may impact maybe mental health and those kinds of things as well. They are looking at three components. The, an AI investigation, the power vitals and power forms as additional forms that we may want to consider in the future as well. One of the things that we talked about in this is, we were initially talking about it just within the Police Department, but maybe there's some bleed over into maybe other areas could utilize the same information. For instance, in dispatch, because of their caseload and that type of thing as well, or even potentially the fire department and other emergency responders that have the same kinds of things. So one of the things that was asked is perhaps we, we take a, provide a written proposal that would take into account any, any additional information or opportunities that we may have, and if there are any duplications and things like that within the existing software programs within Georgetown. To just provide that so that when it does come to the council, you've got a, a full understanding of what, what the proposal is and what was evaluated and why. So again, I think maybe just a little deeper analysis so that we understand and can make good decisions to give our, our Police Department some additional tools to use for, for our officers. And then we wrapped up just with some open items that we're continuing to discuss. One is the traffic unit and the great work that's going on in impacting, reducing speed and reducing wrecks and collisions and those kinds of things. We're seeing some very positive results from that based on the numbers that they're seeing. And they are utilizing a lot of federal overtime grant money for that. So I want to thank the chief and his unit for all of that. The, the last item that we talked about, again, parking downtown and kind of the lanes that we've had some conversation about that. And so we started having a conversation about that, you know, what they've seen or what they've heard from other departments around the country and things like that. And one, I think, potential for us to consider, and we're, we've asked them to send this on to the Traffic Committee for their review as well, is for the angled parking that we have downtown, where we have some folks that may be sticking out into the passing, the travel lane, that we put a closing box line on the angled parking, similar to a parallel park, parking where you've got a front and back moniker and you have to be in there to be legal, that we could potentially do that. So that we give whoever's parking in there a visual, are we, are you in and out of traffic or not? And if you're not, then maybe you need to find someplace else to park. So we're, we're going to suggest that goes to the Traffic Committee for their input and any suggestions there. Given that it's a state route, you know, obviously, we'll have to have some conversations with the state.
Yep.
DOT. And that was all we discussed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Minkie. All right. And this morning, I, this afternoon, I sworn another officer, Mr. Gay from Winchester, who's going to be joining this force here. So, so glad to have him on, on board. Next, we have item number eight, which is the Bluegrass Recovery Initiative.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Should have speak up there. My goodness. I don't have you on my list here, so now I got to add you. What are you, you know, you're sitting at the back of the class, and there you are. You want me to pass? There you go. I'm sorry. Go again. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Finance?
So the Finance Committee met on November 17th, 2025, called to order 8:00 AM. All the members, committee members were, were present, as well as mayor's staff and representatives of Stockyard Banks. The minutes were approved unanimously from the October 20th, 25 meeting. The first item on the agenda was the Stockyards Bank Investments. The representatives presented us with investment approaches that would capture higher yield interest while maintaining liquidity. The motion, the motion was made to recommend to the, to the full City Council by Mayor Jenkins and seconded by Lesby Mitchell. This was presented to the full council at the last meeting, and that, that did pass. The next item was the Agency Appropriations Policy. Committee Member Jenkins stated that the current policy does not allow for any additional funds that the agency may request beyond the initial budget allocation. It's been suggested that the policy be amended to budget for special situations, perhaps, perhaps with stipulations, including the amount requested and a number of times a request can be made, and a requirement of a new application for the additional request. So we're going to, a draft amendment is, will be brought to the next Finance Committee meeting, which will be next Monday. Under general discussion, City Attorney Buttram recommended a general update on ARPA funds at the, at future Finance Committee meetings because these funds have to be, had to be used by the end of fiscal '26. So we'll get a, a presentation at the next meeting. And then Committee Member Lesby Mitchell requested capital request and budget items be prepared and distributed before the City Council's work session on December 9th. So with that, we adjourned at 9:00.
Well, thank you. Again, my oversight, I forgot that you didn't have the last time. You didn't have your homework. Oh, yes.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Yeah.
Calendar year '26.
Calendar '26.
Yeah, not calendar year.
It says fiscal.
Should be calendar.
Okay. Make that, make that change now.
Yeah.
We'll make that change. So again, I'm glad you brought that up. You didn't have your homework last time, so we'll give you grace for this time here. All right. Now we can move on to item number eight. The Bluegrass Recovery Initiative, we got a presentation by Mr. Gene Desrich, Recovery Support Specialist for Bluegrass, BGADD. Is that the Bluegrass Ad District? Developmental District, is that correct?
Area Development.
Area Development. Well, it's close. All right.
Yes.
Gene, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. My name is Gene Desrich Jr. I serve at the Bluegrass Area Development District as our Recovery Support Specialist. Prior to joining the ad, I've, I've been involved in SUD-related work for almost 10 years now. Had the opportunity to serve with former Governor Fletcher when he came back into the nonprofit space and created the Fletcher Group. I've also had the honor of serving on Kentucky's Advisory Board for Recovery Ready Communities since that was started and got reappointed. But anyway, I had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Jenkins and some of the staff, as well as Judge Covington about three weeks ago. And I reviewed with them this project. I'm in the process of requesting a million-dollar grant from the Kentucky Opioid Abatement Advisory Commission to, to launch this project, what, what I've titled the Bluegrass Recovery Initiative. So just to give you a little context, you know, on, on just treatment for SUD in fiscal year 2023, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, combined with the federal funds that match on the Medicaid program, spent nearly a billion dollars on this issue. And then there are several other streams of funding that, that flow into attempting to solve this problem. There's money that comes from the Department of Transportation that then gets filtered through the state government. There are, there are monies that come from the Economic Development Administration, the Health Resources Services Administration, the block grant dollars that get distributed by the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. And then, of course, there are numerous charities and other nonprofit organizations. One of the things that I've come to, to realize, you know, when, when I went back to school, I'm a person in long-term recovery myself. I don't know that that matters. But, you know, I went back for public administration because, you know, for me, growing up in eastern Kentucky and then starting to do this work, I began to grow very frustrated as to why, despite the enormous financial resources that were targeted towards solving this issue, we failed to see significant and meaningful progress on the issue, whether that related to homelessness, mass incarceration, overdose death, the lack of the ability of individuals to, you know, find gainful employment and resume, you know, their place in society. And so, you know, writ large, that's what I hope to be able to start to accomplish through the Bluegrass Recovery Initiative. You know, the work that I did with the Fletcher Group and that I've got to do with the Recovery Ready Communities Initiative, we've done a really good job of creating kind of that two-dimensional model of what a recovery ecosystem is. You know, we can put it on paper, and we can tell you what it is supposed to look like. But, you know, similar to how an architect draws what a building should look like on paper, it's still just two-dimensional until you actually build it. And so, you know, at the highest level, that's going to be my goal with this initiative. If, if we're funded by the Abatement Commission at the state level, it will allow me to retain four other staff persons to work with me at the Bluegrass Area Development District. This effort will also have kind of its own board, similar to the way that we do the Workforce Board for the workforce programming dollars that we get from the state and federal government. And, you know, I'm going to try and implement the same, the same tactics that we used at the Fletcher Group. We call it the bottom-up, top-down approach. So the ad itself will be able to appoint a mayor and a judge executive that is part of our 17-county region to that board. I'm ask, we, Bluegrass Ad actually touches four congressional districts. So I've, I've reached out to all, of course, we're mainly in the six, but we do touch the fourth and the fifth and the second. I haven't nailed that one yet because it's only Frankfurt. But, but anyway, I've, I've asked all of their offices, you know, in turn, to have a staff member be there. And then there are a handful of state agencies, as well as like the Circuit Judges Association and the Commonwealth Attorneys Association. You know, one of the things I love about this country is that, you know, we're able to solve complex problems, you know, when the right people get in the room together. And this is a complex problem, and I want to get the right people on the governance structure. I want to get the right people at, at the advisory level, and I want to get the right people on, on the payroll. You know, there's no reason that we should spend as much money as we do and not have more show for it on this issue. On a more hopeful note, you know, for each individual that successfully recovers from active substance use disorder, you know, for your perspective, it's a huge impact on your bottom line, both at the local, state, and federal level. They go from being a 100% consumer of public goods to a 100% producer of public goods, even if the only thing they ever do is stop, you know, go into emergency rooms, jails, and find some level of gainful employment. Of course, much more than that actually happens. You know, individuals in recovery actually are volunteer, you know, they volunteer at three to five times the rate of the average population. Service is a huge component of many pathways of recovery. And so this initiative, you know, and, and then I'll, I'll stop and allow for questions. I know I've said a lot. But, you know, there will be five essential pillars to this effort. Prevention, risk reduction, treatment, recovery, and it will have an element of interdiction as well. You, you know, you can't ignore the supply side of a supply and demand equation. So I submit myself to your questions.
All right. So before we get down, again, thank you for coming. You know, he, he had mentioned earlier that he came and talked to Judge Covington, myself, and some others to present this. And we thought a good idea that we present this to let, let's to legislative bodies, so you all can know what this program details and what the initiative is. And, you know, the thing about it is that, if I understand this correct, that, you know, you're talking about a one, one-time investment.
Yes, sir.
I think it's $5,000.
Yes, sir.
And that will be coming from, I guess, the abatement money that we have, that we receive from the settlements, and that in itself, so it's a one-time process. But hopefully, that, you know, other counties taking part, and, and it's an outreach to hopefully, that will touch not just Georgetown, Scott County, but others that, you know, that has this same issue. So, that is the reason why I thought it was a good idea that we bring this to the legislative bodies, to hear and hear what they're saying. And I'm very much appreciative of the fact that he himself is a, an example of, of what can happen if you give him an opportunity. And I think sometimes, we forget that, you know, part of our job as council is to offer us help when we can, and, and even those that are vulnerable, to give them an opportunity to actually give back, work in society, as he mentioned. If they're able to stop using and be able to become a productive part of society, I think we have stepped up and done something well. So, that being said, I'll leave it up to council. If you have questions or comments, here's an opportunity to do so.
Just a question?
Yes.
Are you all using or going to use the NET device in part of this as recovery?
So, this office will not do programming of its own. Our job will be to fiscally map what all the programs are, both here and across the region, and make sure that both the folks that work locally, as well as yourselves, are adequately informed of what those funding sources are, if they're activated in your community, and probably most importantly, at least from my perspective, if they're operating efficiently and in collaboration with the other components that lead an individual to long-term sustained recovery. I am familiar with the product, and it, it seems like it's great.
Successful for me, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And, I'm sorry, the, the pledge is only valid if we receive the larger award. So, if you choose to agree to support this project, that, that will only be valid if we receive the much larger award from the state.
So, no worries. If you don't get the money from state, this is all no, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Yes, go.
So, Mayor, thank you. The, Gene, thanks for providing this information. So, we just got this, and just went through the, the information from the packet. I've, I've worked a lot in the workforce area, the, the private sector, recovery programs that were set up by the State, State Chamber Workforce Foundation, and a number of those programs that link all of the activities into recovery, work, and, and all of those areas. The, who, who have you worked with thus far in developing this program and getting buy-in for this process? Because right now, what I've seen is it, it's purely administrative. As you've mentioned, you're not gonna provide services. And so, with the additional grant funding that's there, how much of that is going to administrate, would go to administrative versus actually treatment and services?
Sure, and that's a great question. So, y'all could bring me someone that has a problem today, any individual. And, you know, because of my personal knowledge and relationships, I could absolutely carve out them a path to success, beginning with whether they're in court or in jail, and then going to treatment, and then hopefully finding a quality recovery residence, and then being able to engage with, you know, a, a quality workforce program while they find a primary care physician, and, you know, maybe interact with somebody like Cory's people, and, you know, eventually get a job. But, you know, there is, there is no one in the state, including myself, that right now, today, could tell you what all the funding sources are, who is operating all the programs, and how they connect together. So, part of what I heard in your question are what are some of the outcomes that I'm gonna hold myself accountable to. One of the, one concrete thing that I will hold myself accountable to is whether or not this office is successful in generating new memorandums of understanding, and preferably memorandums of agreement between different providers and different nonprofit entities that are operational in this space. I don't know how many food pantries you have, but if you have more than one, something's probably gone wrong. And, and that's just, you know, and you had asked, who have I spoken with about this? So, presently, the county governments have access to technical assistance to advise the county governments on the appropriate use and planning for their local opioid abatement funds, and that is provided to them through CAECO. The cities don't have access to that at this time. And regardless of what you all decide, if this is successful, you know, that will be a function of this office, is to provide the city government directly with technical assistance and help you all, preferably identify and develop a local advisory board of your local experts that can help you all do your long-term strategic planning for the next 18 years, that these opioid abatement funds will be available. And it would largely follow that same kind of process. You know, the first, first things first, you gotta understand what's there, you gotta understand how it's paid for. And then, if they aren't working together, you need to figure out why, and then figure out how to get them to work together more effectively. To me personally, you know, part of my personal ethos that drives this work, I firmly believe, whether it's through the Medicaid program or any other program, if you receive public funds, your first duty is to provide the public with value. And if I'm being frank, it doesn't currently operate that way, and I want to try and help fix that as much as I can.
Yeah. I applaud that, and, and I really appreciate your candor on that, because I think that's important. The, and that, and that's the, where I'm coming from, trying to, to make sure that we're utilizing funds. And we have a program that's established that is on a path to success. The, so today, I was able to, to call around, and nobody's heard of the, the BRI.
It doesn't exist yet.
But, and, and that's why I asked about, you know, who you've talked to. So, when I talked with the counterparts in the state that are working with the recovery groups, and with the business folks that are working with the recovery groups, and all of those that would be the providers of the activities. So, it just seems like maybe we're premature at this point in committing funds to a program that's not fully developed. I would certainly hope, you know, you would be able to bring all that together. But if, if you didn't get the million-dollar grant, what's the minimum that you would be able to operate on if you only got $250,000 or in the grant?
Sure. So, this work actually started about a year ago, when I first joined the ad, and the strategy at that time was to develop one-on-one contracts with individual local governments to offer, you know, my direct assistance, you know, just me. Contract between the ad and, and whoever the municipal or county government was. We did engage on that with Franklin County, recently Madison County, I'm sorry, the City of Richmond chose to engage in that as well. You know, just the, just the development of the local advisory board structure in Franklin County is a lot of work. It's, you know, I could probably do like two more communities, and then I would be at capacity. You know, you mentioned that the folks at the state aren't familiar with BRI. I'm, I'm not talking to them right now. I'm, I'm trying to talk to you all. My role and my job at Bluegrass Area Development is first and foremost to be of service to the local governments, to the counties and the city governments, not the state. I, I do believe that they would collaborate. There are several, I don't know if I included the scope of the advisory board. Currently, that's gonna be led by Judge Steele in Mercer County. Mercer County is one of the communities that has agreed to financially participate in this project, as has Scott County, the City of Richmond, Franklin County. There are a few others as well, and then I'm still in discussions with others. The ad itself is also going to be asking its board to pledge $25,000 of our money as match funds to the grant. So, I hope that, that has answered your question in part.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All right. Next on the item will be the resolution, the agreement for participating in the development... Oh, go ahead. I'm real good. I'm just reading this next one. The agreement for participating in the development of the Bluegrass Recovery Initiative. This is where a resolution was put together, and you have seen that resolution. And so, therefore, at this time, I will entertain a motion from this council.
Motion.
Motion is made by Ms. Sams. Do I have a second? Second made by Ms. Mitchell. Are there further questions and/or comments?
Mayor, could I ask Cory to come up and, and speak to this?
Yeah.
How, how, how would you...
Cory?
...intersect with the monies that he is trying to get in the administrative structure?
So, we haven't had any one-on-one conversations about this particular project. We've worked closely with Gene for, gosh, four years now, three to four years. You know, he's a presenter at most of the recovery events we go to. He was just in New Orleans with us, so, you know, as far as his integrity, I, I don't doubt that a bit. You know, the $5,000, when you're trying to get a million, you know, it, it's just trying, I think it, I'm not gonna speak for him, but if it were me, I'm just trying to get buy-in from communities. So, I know I've got that kind of collaboration, but, no, he's...
Yeah, I absolutely don't question his integrity, or his passion, or the, or the goodness of the, the program. I'm just wondering how it would intersect with our local efforts if we got this?
Um...
Or don't we know that far down?
I don't know that far down yet.
Okay.
In how I've listened to his presentation, I think it would help communities figure out where the bad actors are in this space, and I think that, just by itself, would save lives.
Yeah.
There, you know, there are bad actors, and there are some locally that needed to be, need to be weeded out, and, you know, the kind of collaboration he's talking about, I think would put more pressure on, on these people. You know, some people sadly are in it for the, a money grab, and it's sickening, so...
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions and/or comments? All righty then. For item B, resolution, the agreement of the participation in the development of the Bluegrass Recovery Initiative. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right.
Mayor?
Yep.
May I explain?
Yep.
So, my no vote is not that I disagree with the, the activity and the, but I think the, I think it's premature and in response to kind of local activities. If, if this is mirrored after the, the Workforce Board process, then the decisions are made by that group, not locally. Even though you may have some representation on there, but that's, all those decisions are made by that board. So, not locally.
All right. So, let us, the record reflect that it was seven to one. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The motion passed. Moving right on to item number nine, planning and zoning, zoning ordinance.
Okay.
You have a little report for us?
We have a little report for us.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we had a meeting, it was a special-called meeting that was on December the 4th at 2:30 p.m. We were all in attendance, we had a couple of guests in the audience. We talked briefly about mixed-use developments, inconsistency in the use of landscaping, talked about some of the best practices and how to define what the best practices would be. We also talked about variances and that there could be a better definition for them. We discussed on how to handle traffic studies more efficiently. Could there be traffic bonds? Could we find more creative ways of parking in subdivision areas, because we all have shortage of parking? So, all of these could take place in the form of zoning ordinances. Mr. Minky brought to us a Legislative Reshorts Commit, Commission on Housing Task Force, which was their study and review for the future housing needs of Kentucky, and land reform for Kentucky. Some seem to be positive, but a lot of it would take away the home rule from our communities, such as ours. The very thing that we're in there discussing about how we change ordinances wouldn't matter anymore, based on their recommendations. Some of the things is such as they would provide that local governments could, or should not be able to set their minimum lot sizes under particular square footage amount and prevent the adoption and enforcement of setback requirements. Those are some of the things that we've kind of argued about and discussed in here. They will allow the developer options to build more density and more efficiency in land and urban service boundaries. Well, that's the very thing we have been discussing. So, anyway, it, the state repassed that we reduce what the city could produce in our ordinances. The task force also recommended that the local laws requiring units to have certain numbers of parking spaces would be reduced. I mean, how many times have I talked about, that's one of the main issues that neighbors fuss about with each other that comes here. It also talks about tax cuts, which for affordable housing trusts, those things are good. So, I've asked, just before the meeting, kind of asked Mr. Minky if he would send each of you all a copy of that, because it's a very good information, and so it may be something we need to take up with our, our representatives on it. Our next meeting will be on December the 17th at 3:00 o'clock at the police station in the community room. At that time, as all three members, we'll have a list compiled of items that the, that we want to bring back, suggestions to the council to start looking at. So, we hope by January, we have something, something for you in writing. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mike, go on. Thank you. All righty. Next, we have, we did item 10 already, so let's move now to item number 11, with the police force. And we got, A, municipal order for surplus. See if you want to come up and tell us some stuff that you wanna surplus out.
This mayor and council, it's an ambulance that we've had for several years that was handed down to us from the EMS station. We purchased it for a dollar, I think about nine years ago, and we used it for our negotiations unit and some of our special response team, and we have gotten a better working van and vehicle now, so we found another home for it. The sheriff's office is excited to have it and looking forward to using it.
You want sheriff's office of Scott County, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. So, you have heard the request?
Yes, motion?
Yes, I do.
Motion?
Motion being by Ms. Sams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mitchell. Are there further questions and/or comments? All in favor of the municipal order to surplus the ambulance to the Scott County Sheriff's Department signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let the record reflect that it passed. Item B, municipal order for contract for the police department and dispatch facility needs assessed. needs assessment. I think Mr. Minky talked a little bit about this earlier, and we talked a little bit about this in our finance committee meeting. And this was talking about the, actually, the physical structure of the police, and also looking at, at actually a budget item that we, we are putting in the budget to go ahead and look at that study and take that next step. So at this time, do I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Ms., Ms. Mitchell. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Minky. Are there further questions and/or comments? Although in favor of the municipal order, contract for police department and dispatch facilities needs assessment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let the rec reflect that it passed. Item C, resolution 2025 Violence Against Women's Act, VAWA, grant award acceptance, accept, yeah.
Acceptance.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
This is funding that is for an ongoing program that has existed. I think it pays for the special victims unit and the police department. So we're just getting money again this year.
And this is, this is this one, of course, you know, we have gotten for years, we've always applied for this and got, been very fortunate to get this to help combat this, this growing issue that has plagued this, 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 this country in, in a way. So I'm glad we can take a small part in accepting this. So at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Ms. Hammack. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second made by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and/or comments?
I have a comment or a question or something
Okay.
of that nature. So, you know, we have the new shelter, is any of this grant money going to be allowed to be used for that shelter, or is most of it being used for legal services and counseling?
The VAWA funding is paying for the salary
Salary, mostly?
For the officers that are working on this
Okay.
test, or this team.
Almost exclusively?
Exclusively.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? It's been properly motion made and properly second, and any other questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Thank you. Next, item number 12, the city engineer municipal order, street dedication village at Lanes Run Phase 3, Section 1A. And I believe this is what usually when they do all the requirements that is required, they are then turned over to the city, is that correct?
That's exactly right. Everything's built, the roads are in, the sidewalks, curb and gutter, stormwater, sanitary sewer water, and now it's ready to be dedicated or turned over to the city to be included with our assets.
All right, you have heard the request, do I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Hampton, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Crisp has seconded this motion.
I have a question.
Yes.
On Oxford Landing?
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't go all the way back, does it? That's just part of it.
Uh, yes, it should be part of it.
It's not the full length of that street.
I don't believe so, no. O- Oxford, it's off of Old Oxford Drive.
Yeah, this is subdivision, this is subdivision that's behind where I live, so
Yeah.
all three of those, and Limestone's the only one that's pretty much built out, but Oxford Landing, they're still building a lot, and Savannah, I think they're still building, but it doesn't look like them the length, that's very long.
No, it's a, generally, these are done in phases too, they do, they do different phases, because they can't afford to do it all at once, so they break it into parts. And so the overall project might have five phases, and they do, you tackle one at a time. And as they get them done, they turn them over to the city.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Thank you. Item 13, council discussion, old business. Do we have any old business? All right, then we'll pass on to new business. All right, moving right along. Item 14, council comments. Mr. Stone, I'm looking right at you, guess what, I'm gonna let you go first.
Well, thank you, sir, I greatly appreciate that. Next Monday is our normal monthly traffic committee meeting. We, Crisp, myself, and Eddie Hightower, Mr. City Engineer, have discussed if we're going to cancel that. Not much on for the U.C. center, so we're going to go ahead and cancel that, be the task force manager. The only other thing I've got is I'm going to get with Emily and look more in depth in the, the information that Mr. Holden brought forth in regards to KRS 96. I'm going to look into some of that and see, see if it's something that we need to bring forward to the
All right. All right. Ms. Mitchell?
All good.
Mr. Hampton?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I just went Saturday night to the Christmas parade, had a great time, great turnout, thanks to the city for the float, it was really pretty, it was, it was nice, so, but thanks to everyone's efforts on that, and it just, tree's really pretty, so just glad to participate, thank you.
It was a little cold, but
It was a little, little cold.
We survived it, that, and before I let Ms. Brent say something, Ms. Brent, I'll let you go and say it, then I'm gonna say something, go ahead.
I have nothing to say.
Okay, that's my thought, so I'll move on to me. I'll just give you a chance, okay. One thing I want to say, and this is a, a shout-out to our Public Works. You know, last, last Tuesday, we had that first weather event, and the roads were clear, and we had one this morning, the roads was clear, and, you know, to them to get out, and they working in almost 12-hour shifts, and they didn't go home till everything was done, and I want to publicly let everybody know that we have the best Public Works in the state of Kentucky, and they do it each and every day, so when you see those people driving out, just wave to them, says, "Thank you, nice work," and, on that. And so let's move on. Now, Ms. Hammack?
Yeah, I want to give a shout-out to the 250th celebration. All of these sound really interesting, and I hope the citizens will get involved. One other thing I wanted to bring up is the perception that was also in the newspaper that the city council does not want community input. I have not heard anyone on this council, and you all feel free to correct me and say that you don't want community input, but when things like that are published in the paper, at some level, I think it deserves a response, to say that if there's anything that I or anyone else up here said to intimate that we do not invite, want, or desire community input, they're not hearing my phone ring, they're not seeing the emails that I invite people to write, and I talk to the citizens all the time. They have free rein to contact us, and they do, and we're glad that they do, because it widens our perspective and enriches our insight. And when, however, we have an appointed committee, it is not a time to have someone else who's not on that appointed committee to be sitting with the committee, and that was the statement that was made. Now, when that larger P&amp;Z committee is formed, there's going to be community representation. But there are times when our committees have to deliberate and invite, as a small portion of the time of that deliberation, to have somebody have one minute, or two minutes, or four minutes, that they can't speak during those committee deliberations. But the comment was made and intended to say, they can't be a part of the committee unless city council invites them to be part of the committee. So I just wanted to clarify that point, because sometimes things, perspectives get written in the newspaper, not by the newspaper staff themselves, but by citizens that give the blatant statement that city council, or certain people on city council, don't want community input. I think we all want community input, and that's why we're your representatives. So thank you for the opportunity to express that.
All right, Mr. Minky?
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one shout-out I'd like to make, to the news graphic, and James Scoggan, who got up early and, and went on a ride with Matt Carter from Rumkey to see and experience what that's all about. And I, I think if, if you haven't had a chance to read that, I would encourage you to do that, because it does give you a very good snapshot of what they do to service and provide service to our community. You know, just simple things that we can do to help them, bag your trash, those kinds of things will greatly help the paper flying and things like that, and, you know, if, if we can't help our fellow people, then shame on us. So if you haven't read it, please do, and I really appreciate you guys taking that on and, and being, taking a day in the life of a waste management professional.
All right, Ms. Sames?
Yes, it's actually on, I think it was toilet stand about the recreation equipment, the playground equipment that's over in front of the Davis Building. It's really super nice, but where they took up behind where the old equipment was, and check it out, I was with a group and we were rent at the building, which the building is a great place to rent, that's very economical for groups, by the way. But we rented, and the back was, it was like a muddy, I mean, muddy pit. Is the park
We, they, we are talking about that as we speak, and we're trying to figure out how we can mitigate that and come up some plan. They are working on that as, as we speak, and we hope to give council some information about it as we, as we go through that.
Well, the playground equipment looks really fine.
Yeah, it is, it is that, yeah.
Yeah, that's it, Mayor.
All right, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've got two quick shout-outs, a couple of positive things looking back over this last year. I realized a few days ago, it's been months since we've received, or at least I've received any negative feedback about our city's trash service. I think that's a really positive, thank you for Republic for stepping up and really helping out several months ago. It's, it's really crazy that we haven't heard anything. Of course, now that I bring that up, it'll jinx it, and we're going to get some feedback that way, but, Todd, you already got some? Yeah, but that's a really, really nice positive thing. You know, we shined a little bit of a light, light on it a few months ago, and, and it's come a long way. The second thing, we had a gentleman bring up the pavilion during council, or during public comments. I also realized after, you know, at the start of the year, one of the first issues we had, we had some local downtown businesses concerned about the amount of the events that were taking place downtown. Now, as we look back, a lot of those events chose to have their events elsewhere, like at the pavilion, and those downtown businesses really happy about that. So to everybody involved in encouraging businesses, or encouraging events off of Main Street, you know, we sure, we still like events on Main Street, of course, but we got a lot of those overflow to go to the pavilion, and that was really nice. So another very good positive thing looking back.
All righty, everybody had their turn to talk, and it is time, no other but before the council, and I see they're smiling, this meeting is adjourned.